You're listening to Good Morning Gwinnett, a division of Noise Media Network. Hosted by Audrey Bell Kearney. Sharing stories about people and places around beautiful Gwinnett County and beyond. Monday through Thursday at 10 a.m. Southern Living at its best.
Good morning, good morning, good morning all my Gwinetians out there in Gwinnett, Atlanta, and all of you around the world. Listening to the sound of my voice. It's a beautiful day here in Gwinnett County. It's about seventy-five degrees going up to a high of eighty-six. So it's gonna be pretty. It's gonna be a pretty nice day. I woke up this morning though, it was gorgeous. I was like, oh, this is nice. It's starting to feel like fall a little bit in the morning. So I'm like, oh, we're gonna get an early fall? Cause it was really nice. I was like, okay, so it could stay like this all day. And so it was about sixty-seven degrees this morning when I woke up. And I'm like, oh, this is nice. But anyway, I hope you're having a wonderful, wonderful day. Listen, it's Spotlight Thursday, so I got a great guest coming up. Especially if you're in the Gwinnett County area and you wanna hear. We're gonna be talking about education here in Gwinnett County. Cause you know, um, our school board has been in the news quite a lot. Um, with the releasing of Dr. J. Alvin Wilbanks and bringing in our new superintendent of schools, uh, Dr. Calvin Butt Watts. I don't know why I'm gonna call him Calvin Butt, Calvin Calvin Watts. So we're gonna be talking to, um, um, Dr. Therese Johnson this morning. She's gonna be talking to us about, listen, she has a resume that's out of this world, y'all. I thought I had done a lot. She's done a lot, a lot of great things. So I'm happy to, I'm happy to bring her on, but, um, let's get on with our show. You know, today is my Friday, even though it's Thursday, it is my Friday. And thank you all, everybody for sending up prayers for my, um, for my friend's son. His name is Messiah. He was in a horrible accident while he was working. He in California. He lives in Jersey, but he had, he drives truck. He was in a trucking accident in California. He was in a bad, very bad accident. And you know, we just praying that he recover. He had to go to surgery this morning. He broke all the bones in his face. Such a, such a handsome young man. I just, I can't even imagine the pain that he must be in, um, with all the bones broken in his face. So they have to go back in there and I guess reconstruct all the bones to put his face back together. So, um, just keep us in prayer, y'all. Because, um, his mom, when my mom passed away, she constantly texts and calls. She just text me this week and said, hey, how's everybody doing? Um, constantly, constantly stayed on, on my line, just making sure that everybody was okay. Making sure that I was okay. And so I want you guys to help me keep her and her kids in, in prayer. Um, as her son recovers, we're gonna pray for one hundred percent full recovery, better than he was before, mentally, physically, and emotionally. Um, so I need you guys to keep praying for him. His name is Messiah. And we just wanna keep him up in prayer. All right, so today is, listen, today is National Underwear Day. So what do you do on National Underwear Day? Do you wear special underwear? Do you not wear underwear? Do you wear two pairs of underwear? Do you wear dip? What, what do you, do you wash your underwear? What is National Underwear Day like? I'm looking at this like, okay. So listen, I told you guys before, I need to come up with a few holidays. I swear because National Underwear Day, like what do you, what do you do? How do you celebrate that? You go without underwear? I don't know. It's also National Work Like A Dog Day. Listen, I work like a dog anyway. Who, now somebody probably saying, what? Okay, so also National Oyster Day. Oh my God, I'm so hungry. I didn't have, I had watermelon and I had a half of, a half ounce of cashews. I'm starving. Um, yeah, it's National IPA Day. I don't know what that is. I think that's beer. I know IPA is a beer. I don't know what else IPA stands for. But a nice beer and some oysters, yeah, it sounds delicious, right? So you gonna, you gonna put on some clean underwear? Cause you gonna work like a dog. And then for, for a break, you gonna have some oysters and beer. That's what you do today. That's your day right there. All right, let's get on with our horoscopes brought to you by Noted Astral, Michael Thieson. Today, Thursday, April the, what's it, I mean, April. I'm really taking y'all back. August the fifth. It is not April. I am not losing it. I just had a mis, misrepresentation of words. It's August the fifth. Today is Thursday, August the fifth. We're gonna kick it off like we always do. And that is with Aries. You can gain approval, get kudos, and ask for help if you put a little heart into your speech or request. You must try to lay cards, lay your cards on the table. Talk to your mate and tell them how you feel. Office of joint ventures are likely. You got a lot going on there, Aries. Talk to your mate, tell them how you feel. Listen, before you say something to your mate, make sure that it's not you. I'm just saying. Cause a lot of times we wanna blame the other person without really looking into us, right? So before you, before you talk to your mate about how you feel, make sure that how you feel really has nothing to do with you. Right? Because you wanna blame folks, what, and you need to say to yourself, okay, let me look at what I've done to see if I contributed to the situation. Before I open my mouth and say something to your mate. That's all I'm saying. Cause sometimes you wanna put the blame on other people and you really need to do, uh, interlook, inter, I don't even know if that's a word. Look at yourself, you know, and say, okay, let me see what, what my part in this was before I even say anything. Cause you, you'll say something, you're gonna make the situation worse because it's not just the person that you wanna blame. It's really, it could really be you. Um, talk to your, uh, office for joint ventures are likely. Listen, if you get an offer for joint venture, check it out. Do your due diligence. Check the personnel, check the venture out, check the market out. Make sure it's, it's something that makes sense, right? Make sure that you do everything you need to do to make sure that this is a good fit for what you wanna do. Do not chase the dollar. I'm gonna say that one more time. Do not chase the dollar. Make sure it's something that you're gonna be committed to. Now here's the thing, if all they want you to do is be an investor in this venture and you just a solid investor and you don't care about that, then that's cool. But still make sure you do your due diligence because every business opportunity, every business opportunity is a risk most of the time. And don't invest money that you can't afford to lose. I don't care how great it sounds. And don't get mad if you lose the money because you know going in, there's a possibility you could lose the money. I'm just, I'm just trying to help you out today. Taurus, stop telling others about your problems. Those who have been to demand that should be put in their place or out to pasture. Now listen here, that's Michael saying that, don't put nobody out to pasture. You gonna go to jail. But put them in their place, but don't put them out to pasture. You can cut, cut them loose, put them in their place, don't put them out to pasture. You gonna go to jail. Now Michael said that, I didn't say that. You'll be tempted to spend extravagantly today. I know, I'm tempted right now. I'm tempted to go and sit down and have a great lunch at like, I don't know, something good like oysters. Like Oyster Rockefeller. Ooh, that sounds so good. I'm so hungry. Anyway, stop telling people about your problems. Nobody wanna hear them. I'm just, I'm just saying. If all you doing is complaining about the problems, what is the solution? Taurus, what's the solution? That's what you need to focus on. Stop focusing on the problem. Ask for help to get the solution. I'm, I'm not a really, I'm not a problem talker. I'm a solution talker. I'm telling you, I'm so short on patience when it's a problem. Like, okay, okay, we, we know what the problem is. Now let's focus on the solution. That's me. And it's annoying a lot of times. I annoy myself sometimes, cause I have problems I be focusing on too. But most of the time, I'm the solution person. Gemini, try to make your lover understand that you need to do things with your friends. Try to be fair in your dealings with acquaintances. Money problems will get the worst of you, of your partner, if your partner hasn't been playing by the rules. Ooh, that's a touchy one. That's a touchy one. First of all, you and your partner need to understand that you need to have a life and they need to have a life outside of each other. I know, you love each other, you wanna be together all the time, but you need to have a separate life. You need to have your friends, they need to have their friends, and they need to understand that. You know, sometimes people just don't understand that. I need, I need a life outside of you. And it's okay, it's not a bad thing. You should have your life and they should have their life. That's what make it all, makes it all good. When you just like this all the time, yeah, it's, it's not a good thing. I'm just gonna tell you, like, I'm not saying not love your partner, but have, have your own separate life. I'm not saying separate to the point where it's a secret life. I'm just saying have your friends, y'all have friends together and they have their friends. It's okay. You know, now here's the thing, friends, not friends with benefit, just friends. You know, not emotionally connected friends where you know, you get on the phone and y'all bigging each other up and he's telling you good stuff that makes you feel great. And she's telling you good stuff to make ego go up. And then next thing you know, y'all got emotional relationship going on. Not that type of friend. I'm talking about just regular friends. I know, cause some people get caught up in it. And, and here's the thing, when people have emotional friends, that's, you having an emotional affair. I ain't gonna even get into that. That's a, that's a subject for another show, period. But sometimes you get caught up in that whole emotional thing and you don't even understand. Um, you're having an emotional affair. You really are. All right, so Dr. Therese, I'm gonna be with you shortly. Please hold on, um, you're early, so just hold on for me. I'm coming. All right, cool. Y'all can't see her, but I can see her and she's early. I, I, maybe I missed the, let me finish the horoscopes. All right, let me, let me stop talking. All right, Cancer, property deals will be, will pay big dividends. Extravagance will be a problem. You are best not to discuss your personal life with others. Keep your business to yourself, Cancer. Don't discuss your personal life, that's your business. Keep it to yourself, all right? You don't want it out, don't tell nobody. That's what I tell people all the time. Leo, make sure that you have the pertinent information before any reprisals or making any moves. Real estate investments could be prosperous. Delve a little deeper in, into what you really wanna know. All right, listen, real estate investments could be profitable, Leo, but make sure you know what you getting into. Cause real estate can also be tricky, especially you don't know what the heck you're doing. Virgo, you can receive recognition for a job well done. Hidden assets can be doubled if you play your cards correctly. Your real estate, real estate and joint financial ventures are profitable. Okay, it's a money day today. I hear you, it's all about the money today. All right, listen, your real estate and joint ventures could be profitable. Well, do your due diligence, Virgo. Do not just go out there and do that stuff by yourself. I'm telling you what I know, I've done plenty of deals that just flopped because I was trying to do it myself. I was trying to be a lawyer, the real estate investor, I was trying to be everybody, and it just flopped. All right, I'm going to the song. I'll be right back after the song to give you more of the Horoscopes brought to you by Noted Astral, Michael Thieson. So stay tuned. Welcome back, welcome back. It's your girl Audrey Bell Kearney giving you the daily Horoscopes brought to you by Noted Astral, Michael Thieson. We're gonna pick it up with Libra. Your involvement in interest groups may bring you popularity. Take time to make physical improvements that will enhance your appearance. The, the key to feeling good about yourself will be to do something about it. Ain't that the truth? Listen, you wanna feel good about yourself, do something about it, Libra. That's the bottom line. I could go into that, but I won't, cause I got Dr. Therese waiting for me. Um, Scorpio, you can change your living arrangements. Be aware of colleagues who don't have your best interests in mind. You must try to lay your cards on the table. Talk to your mate and tell them how you feel. All right, Scorpio, listen, make sure it's not you. Before you lay them on the table and, 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 and go in, make sure it's not you first and then put your cards on the table. Cause I, I'm telling you now, sometimes it's you. Uh, Sagittarius, discrimination will be in order. Control your temper when dealing with your emotional partner. If you can't include them in your plans, do so. Traveling, family gatherings should be in order. Yep, I'm tired of traveling right now. I've been away seven times this year. I'm not interested in going anywhere else right now. I'm just not. Anyway, discrimination is gonna be in order. I don't know what you gotta be discriminative about, but it's gonna be in order today, Sagittarius. Capricorn, your ideas are good and career moves could be realized. Get proper medical attention and confront your situation decisively. Anger could lead to problems. Listen, take a minute, matter of fact, take two, calm down, relax, because if you get angry, it could lead to problems. Anger could lead to problems. You don't want that to gain your life, Capricorn. Aquarius, unexpected romantic connections can be made if you go out with your friends or take a pleasure trip. You are best to work at home, clearing up overdue projects. Don't overspend, spend on entertainment. You could find that children would be a handful. I had to babysit my granddaughter last night and it was so funny, cause, um, I'm working on someone's campaign and he called me and I was like, hold on. He's like, what's she doing? It was hilarious. So, um, we had to do some campaign talk at ten o'clock at, well, it was like nine o'clock. And, and baby had just went to sleep and my granddaughter is super active. So I was like, hold on. And, and he was like, what are you doing? I was like, I'm with the baby. Last but not least, my fellow fish Pisces, social events held in your home be successful and entertaining for those who attend. Your input into their activities will help bring you closer together. Do a little extra work at home. Lord knows I need to do a little extra. Listen, I don't know about you, Fish, but this weekend is dedicated to me working in the house. It really is. Like I've been gone for like, you know, gone, gone, gone. And, um, I'm dedicating this weekend to just, you know, I'm dedicating this weekend to home. All right, that's all the horoscopes I got for today. I'll be back again on Monday to bring you more of the Horoscopes brought to you by Noted Astral, Michael Thieson. Um, you know, today's my, my Friday. Yes, I know it's Thursday, but it's my Friday. So that's why I said I'll be back on Monday. Now, I got a great guest, y'all. And, um, I wanna, I don't wanna, I don't wanna keep her waiting, cause I know I wanna respect her time. She's a busy woman. When I tell you busy, I do mean busy. Um, she's an entrepreneur, she's an activist, she's on our school board. She's a doctor, she's an educator, she's a teacher, she's a poet, she's an artist, she's all these great things. And she's here with us today. And we're gonna be talking about everything when it comes to education, equity, inclusion, and education. I mean, we're gonna talk about, we're gonna talk about entrepreneurship too, cause she has, she's an entrepreneur. Y'all know I love entrepreneurs. So without further ado, I would like to welcome Dr. Therese Johnson to the show. Welcome, welcome, welcome.
Hi.
How are you?
How are you?
I'm good, I'm good. So thank you for being here this morning. Now, now listen, did I get the time messed up? Did you get like ten o'clock?
No, it was ten thirty. I was just, I just logged in. I knew I was gonna be backstage. I saw we were on StreamYard and so I just said, you know, let me listen to you.
Okay.
As login early, kinda hear what you were talking about.
I'll be talking about the Horoscopes girl on it, early in the morning.
I know, I heard, yes.
I give the stars, like, and it's so funny, cause some people like, oh, you know, that's not true. I'm like, it's okay, but it's entertaining. It's all right. It's okay. I can't please everybody and I don't try, you know?
Oh, absolutely. That, that's a great, uh, thing to know.
Yeah, well, thank you so much for being here with me. You're, you're, you know, I was reading your bio, um, I, I went to your LinkedIn. I tried to go and dig a little bit and find out a little bit more. I got a bio, it was very brief. I was like, nah, I know she's about more than this. Let me go find out some more. And boy, did I find out a lot of stuff. Doctor, educator, entrepreneur, and poet, and author, speaker. But the poet and entrepreneur, that are, like, I love education. Don't get me wrong, y'all. But I know my entrepreneur till I get in the box. Until they put me in the box, I'm an entrepreneur. So I get excited when I see that word. So thank you again for being here. I know you're a busy person and, um, I really do appreciate you taking the time to come on here and talk to us about, you know, um, you and what you're doing here in Gwinnett County. You know, Gwinnett County is always in the news for something. And so, and I have to tell you, cause you were there, um, there's been a lot of hoopla. First of all, congratulations on being, um, on a great upset. I'm gonna say it a great, look, I'm being, I'm kinda being messy. On a great upset. I've been a little messy today, y'all. On a great upset. Um, it's nice to see that we have a board that's a little bit more diverse than it was in the previous years. And so, let me ask you this, how does somebody stay in a position for twenty years? How, how does that happen? Twenty-eight, twenty-six? How, and how does that happen?
Well, my understand, my understanding is that he was, uh, for the current board, he was doing a great job and he wanted to stay and they wanted to support, uh, his, his, uh, desire to stay. And they felt as if, uh, that he was the best person to continue to lead the school district. Um, so I just frankly, I, I believe in term limits. Um, and of course, you know, for elected officials, we technically have term limits. Um, but you know, sometimes when you're leading organizations, you have people who can lead organizations for twenty years. And, uh, and I, I don't know. I think maybe there could be some opportunity for other people and some fresh new ideas, um, you know, at, at a certain point. But it, it, it is what it is. It was their decision and, and that's why he stayed so long.
Yeah, that was a long time. So now, you're, you're new to the board. Um, tell us about what that means. What do you do there? What's your job as a board member for the Gwinnett County Public School System?
Uh, my job is to create and, um, support policy for our school system. Policies that, um, ensure the academic achievement and social emotional success for our students. Um, we work with the superintendent. We, uh, the superintendent is a part of the governance team. And as part of the governance team, we, um, have discussions. Um, we draft policy. Um, we do whatever we can to ensure the, uh, school system is meeting the goals of our students. And, um, and so, so basically, we work closely with the superintendent and we hold the superintendent accountable as well. And that's something that, you know, we will, uh, continue to do as we, you know, move forward with the new superintendent is work closely with Dr. Watts. Um, allow him to, you know, lead and manage the operations of the team, of course, because we're not supposed to do that. But we are, as a policy makers, um, we are supposed to hold our superintendent accountable to the policies we create. And so, um, but, uh, we selected a great, uh, new superintendent and I'm very excited um, that he can build upon a foundation that was created by Dr., I mean, by Mr. Will Banks and Dr. Watts. Will build upon, um, that and he will address, um, some things that we would, would like for him to, to focus on. And so we're looking forward to that.
So now, what, what made you run for this position? Cause I know that the person that you, um, I don't wanna say beat, but beat, um, had been there for a very long time too. What, what made you decide, you know what, I need to, I need to get in here. I need to, I have something I need to say, I have something I need to do. What made you decide to do that? What was a determining factor for that?
Sure, um, well, you know, I, I want to make a difference. And, you know, originally I was, uh, going to run for state senate. And I thought that I could, you know, contribute to education in that way and work in the education committee and, and, and help not just district wide, but statewide. Um, and then I received a call from a few community members, um, including Donna McLeod and some other people. And they called me and said, you know, you have a doctorate in education. You know, this is an opportunity, um, for people to, you know, really benefit from your leadership. And instead of running for state senate, switch over and consider running for school board. So that's what I did. Um, but my passion is education. Um, and, and so that's, that's what my aim was when I decided to get into politics was to really impact the educational system in a way to make sure that we have equitable, um, equitable opportunities for all of our students regardless of, and so that's kind of, that was sort of my, you know, passion of, of wanting to run is, is just ensuring equity in our school system. And so, running for the Gwinnett County School Board, um, and supporting what the community wanted and asked of me. Um, I stepped up and I, uh, decided to run and I, you know, am a single mother and, you know, low income entrepreneur. And, um, I decided, well, you know, I, it's during COVID. At, at the time, it, it was really challenging to, to, to run for office because you couldn't really engage with constituents. And so there were a lot of, uh, there were a lot of challenges from financials to investments. We've been asking people for money when they were losing jobs during COVID.
Yeah.
And so, um, I just said, you know, I'm gonna go, go forward and the people will speak if they want me to, to represent them, they will vote for me. If they don't, then I will have to accept that vote and, uh, and move forward and still do the work that I have been doing. Just because I'm elected or not elected doesn't mean that I stopped doing the work. Because I was doing activism work and, and supporting, you know, equity and diversity before I was on the school board. So regardless of whether I was going to win or not, I would still, you know, do this work around, you know, community, um, engagement, community development and ensuring that, um, you have, you know, justice and equity and inclusion in our, in our, in our communities, including our school system.
Well, thank you for that. Thank you for running. Thank you for being so passionate about our, our system and our, and our community. It's so funny, because, um, when I, I was born in Georgia, but I was raised in Jersey and I moved back to Georgia eight years ago and I was gonna go into politics. So I went to a couple of meetings and I was like, you know what, I'm not quite there yet. I'm not quite there yet. So I decided to, um, be the voice of the community with this podcast. I was like, you know what, let me, let me launch something that I know how to do. I wanna be the voice of the community, you know, I can talk to great people and meet great people. Now, I've been working with, um, politicians ever since then though. Like I have clients, like I'm working with one right now. And it's, it's that kind of work, you have to be, you have to have a big heart. You have to have tough skin. You have to have a lot of, I don't have that yet. Not quite yet, Dr. Therese. I'm, I'm, the tough skin piece, I don't have that yet. Listen, I grew up in Newark, so I ain't quite got that part yet. So, um, how do you, how do you handle it when people come at you? When you know that your heart is in the right place and you're there to do good for the community, but you get people who come at you anyway and they come at you with the nonsense? How do you handle that? Cause I, I'm not there yet.
Yes, you know, this is interesting because this is truly the question. This is truly the question. And, and, and as an abolitionist, as an advocate and activist, you know, for me, you know, my heart has always been, you know, pure in really wanting to do what's best for the people, for all people. I am a black woman. I don't just advocate for black issues and for black people, but obviously I do. Because I am personally impacted by policies that, and laws, uh, that, 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 that impact me as, as, as a black woman, as a, as a mother. Um, so I, of course, advocate for those things. Um, but I, but, but, but I, I also have a multicultural heritage and, and I, I love culture and I love diversity. I love inclusion. So, you know, I, I advocate for, for all people. Um, each and every person deserves the right to be able to survive and thrive. I believe that in my heart. And so when I, because I know who I am, no matter what people say about me, oh, she's this, or she's that, or, you know, she doesn't, only, she only cares about black people or whatever. I, I know in my heart who I am. And that is what I tell children and adults. The most powerful place and space you can be in is knowing who you are. When you know who you are, nothing and no one can try to redefine you, put you in a box or say you are this and that. Because you're like, wait a minute, you don't have that power and I will not allow you to have that power to tell me who I am. I know who I am. So because I know who I am, I stand strong like a tree that cannot be moved. I shall not be moved because I know in my heart, I'm fighting for each and every person to have the right to live, survive, and thrive. I want everyone to be seen, heard, respected, valued, protected, and celebrated. Everyone. And diversity includes all races. It includes different lifestyles. It includes, you know, different ideologies, different political views. Uh, it's, diversity is so beautiful and rich and we can have, um, respect for one another and understand that sometimes we may disagree.
Yep.
But in our disagreement, we can still have a harmonious relationship, even though we may not see eye to eye. Even though there may be some hurt feelings sometimes. But at the end of the day, there's respect and there is value for my humanity. Now, what I find in this political space is I will also not allow people to take away my humanity. I am a human being. I have a life. And I think we as politicians, our public servants, activists, advocates, we have a responsibility to take care of ourselves. We have to. We have, in order for us to effectively do the work, we have to figure out ways and what work, um, and ways that work best for us so that we can be able to do the work. And so for me, my healing space is art. I am an artist. I've been wanting to be, my dream as a little kid, you know, my dad and my mom, my sisters, they always knew. I wanted to be an actress, model, single dancer, and writer, right? All those things. Everything was about art. And so my life growing up, I've always just wanted to, to do that, but that's my healing space too. So I go back there and this is my art, you see here. So I go back there and this is my art, you see here, um, but I go back to, um, to that space where I know that I, I can heal and I can thrive. When I'm, you know, dancing, when I'm writing my poetry. Uh, then that's a release for me. When I'm painting, um, anything that I do that, that, that can allow me to have artistic expression. That gives me strength and that's my healing space. Being out in nature is my healing space as well. And so I think for, for, for people who get all of the anger and uh, the racism and the hate and the bigotry and the antisemitism, all these things. It's so important for us to have a balance in our lives and to know that this school board position does not define me. This is not who I am. I am on the board to make a difference. But the school board position is not who I am. I am a woman with children. I, I have feelings. I have a life. I, I love music. I like to cook sometimes. Um, you know, I, I, I like to paint, you know, I mean, it's, I, I make mistakes. I, I wanna bring that humanity back to the space, to people and teachers. Teachers have lives and they're human beings and that, you know, as long as we're not doing anything illegal or wrong. Then, you know, live your life and don't be defined by a role or a position. But do the best you can if you do have that um position to be able to make an impact. And I think the most powerful position in our educational system is, you know, the most powerful position is teaching, teaching. So, so I think teachers need to create a balance too. They need to create a balance in this space of their own self-care and healing so that they can be the best themselves in the classroom. We don't bring our partial selves in the classroom. We don't leave our problems at the door. That, that, that is, that makes no sense. There's the saying, oh, just leave your problems door when you come home. That's, that's robotic. That is not hu- humanity. We bring our whole selves into the classroom. We bring our whole selves on the board. And so we have to take responsibility as, you know, for ourselves and say, okay, I'm, I'm gonna take care of myself first so that I can be the most effective person. I can be on the school board so that I can be the best teacher I can be in the classroom. Is taking care of yourself. So that's how I deal with this. I deal with all of this hate by taking care of myself, knowing who I am. And also knowing that the people voted for me. I was duly elected in this position um by people who decided they wanted change and they continue to encourage me. And they continue to say you are representing us in the way we want you to represent us. We know who you were before we elected you. Keep doing what you're doing. That one percent of the people, again, very small percentage of the people who are showing the hate against you, it does not reflect who we are as a community. It does not reflect um the whole of Gwinnett County. We love you. Continue to do your work. And i- if, if they want me to return, they'll vote for me again. If they don't, then I have to accept that vote, but you know what? If I don't get re-voted in, my life moves on. It does not define me, but you know what? One thing I am so clear about is no matter what I do or where I go, I will always be a strong advocate for the people. Not for politics. I don't care about. I don't do what I do to re- get re-elected, right? Do what I do, the difference why I'm here right now. I'm here right now. You have me. I'm gonna fight for you. You know that regardless of whatever happens, I'm not out there pandering to people. I don't, uh, I'm very firm and strong on being authentically me and also making sure that the people are represented and that people's voices are being heard and not my own ambition. And not my own aspirations, right? And so, so we have to continuously check ourselves to make sure that we always represent the needs of the people. So whatever table I sit at, I come with all of these people who voted for me um, in District Five. And I know they're sitting at that table with me. And I am, I am their voice and I hope that I make them proud. And for me, this is not about politics. This is not about getting re-elected. This is not about, um, uh, any power. It is really about serving the people and making a difference. And I think when we really are clear about that authentically and unapologetically, no matter what comes our way. We stay focused. We know our why. We know who we are and we just do a great job. And that's it. No matter, regardless of the hate, we have to stay focused.
You have to, you're right. Oh my God, that was like a speech, like that was, that was a great speech. And you know, it's so true and, and I, and I'm working with somebody right now and I just, I've been around him for about two years. And I know that he has the heart for the people, right? Just by the things he's done, even when he wasn't campaigning. And he's, this is the second time running for something. And he reminds me a lot of my brother. And my brother has a heart for people. Now he does, he would never get into politics. But he, the, the gentleman that I'm working with, he reminds me so much of my brother. And I said to him all the time, you're like my little brother. Cause my, my brother, who's my, my little brother too, but they're so much alike in so many ways and, and they always wanna help people. And my brother is big on helping young men. So, you know, just hearing you say that. It, it gives me hope that one day, because that's what my heart is. Um, but the other side of me, like that mean girl side, she's still there. So she, I gotta get her like calm down first, but my heart is there. Cause the mean girl side, she ain't quite there yet. Like I, you know, she might wanna punch a person. So I can't, I can't, she, I gotta get her under control. She's not quite there yet, but. So now you, you're on the board. What are some of the changes you wanna see happen as being a member of the board? What are some of the things that you see that was a problem before that you wanna see differently, um, now they, now, with this new administration with the board?
Oh wow, that's a great question. Um, I ran on the campaign of equity. And, and so, so for me, I want to see an equitable school system. A school system where, you know, every child has what they need to be successful. Um, regardless of their zip code. And it is clear that we have some schools that aren't as resource as other schools, for whatever reason. You know, sometimes it could be, you know, parent involvement. It could be, you know, business support, foundational support from, you know, community members, you know, giving donations or whatever. And it could be several, for several reasons. But, but really it's just, I want to make sure each and every child has what they need to be successful in our school system. Um, outcomes may be different. I re- recognize that. But we have to, as leaders, do the best we can with ensuring that they have what they need. So that's the, that's, that's the number one thing that I, I am focused on. Now that me is the umbrella. That's the big umbrella. Like underneath the umbrella, to me is, is, is the early literacy. I would love to see a universal pre-K in our school system. And for several reasons, when we, we, we talk about, you know, early literacy in District Five, we have a district uh, that has a lot of uh, uh, community members who speak English as a second language. And so because of that, we as a school system have to stay focused on uh, looking at like what, what are the language abilities of our, our students and their parents? And how do we ensure that we are addressing their needs from a linguistic perspective? And so, um, so early literacy will help with that as well as uh, programming for ESOL, ELL people. So English as a second and other language and English language learner uh type programs. I would love to see a school system where all of our teachers are ESOL certified. And that actually benefits not just English language learners, but it also benefits um literacy. And so all kids can benefit from ESOL certified teachers. Um, just because of the strategies and the techniques and the way in which the me- methodologies are presented that can actually help improve literacy for all of our students. Um, so, um, early literacy programs, pre-K, universal pre-K, ELL, ESOL certification for all of our teachers. Now, this is my dream, okay? I'm not saying it's going to happen. But as one member of the board, there are five of us. This is what I am personally advocating for. So I just wanna make that clear that, not that this will happen, but I will continue to advocate for this.
What, what is universal pre-K?
Well, universal pre-K is basically where if you're, you know, four years of age, all regardless of like where you live or your need, you are welcome to participate in, in, in pre-K programming. So typically, right now, we have a Georgia pre-K. Georgia pre-K basically focuses on, um, you know, lower income uh, students or students with special needs. So Gwinnett County currently in some of our schools, we do have a pre-K program. And in our pre-K program, um, it, you know, it's, it's specialized for, for, for pre-K students with, with special needs. And so we have that available. Universal basically says anyone who wants to participate in a pre-K program can. Regardless of income or disability. Um, and so, so, so that's what that is. Okay, so I said, one was the universal pre-K, two was ESOL certification, ELL programming. Um, three, I would love to see um more diversity representation in all levels of our school system. Um, that, um, and that includes uh more bilingual teachers. I would love to see more bilingual teachers, um, regardless of their race, but really anyone who can speak different languages that can help really address the needs of our community. So it's, you know, Vietnamese, uh, and Spanish. Um, so it's really looking at what are the top languages and figuring out how can we create and incentivize and even, and, and even create a feeder program into our school system um, to, to ensure that we're meeting the needs of our diverse population. Um, I would love to see an ethnic studies um curriculum. Um, but not something that is an alternative optional course, but a course that is essentially required. I would love to see multicultural curriculums, multicultural resources throughout our school system, embedded in our curriculum in every single subject area from pre-K through twelfth grade. And, 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 and that is so important because what, what, what that means is that every child, whether they're, you know, regardless of the color or, or, or background, they will be seen, heard and represented in our studies, in our curriculum, in our lesson plans. And that's so important because oftentimes we have our indigenous community, we have our Asian community, um, we have communities that are not represented in our curriculums and they're certainly here. And so I just think it's so important for us to factually represent, um, the community we represent in our school system. Embedded in our curriculum where it's not a separate program, it's just what we do as part of our, uh, our school district and our culture. The other thing I'd like to uh, address is discipline. That we, we know we have an, an issue with discipline disparities. So it's looking at restorative justice programs. It's looking at, well, how can we creatively, um, uh, help our students and, and understand root cause. Once we understand the root cause and we figure out what are the best methods to address their needs. And maybe it's community partnerships, maybe it's getting, you know, you know, more additional resources from the business community or or other organizations that can support our needs to help bridge the gaps. That may be root cause for some discipline problems. Um, maybe it's training for our teachers and, and, and implicit bias training, unconscious uh bias training. Maybe it is, um, you know, uh, uh, figuring out, you know, how do we move from a punitive system? Which I believe we currently have. Move, move it from this punitive kind of policy, program and procedural thing to more of a, a restorative, uh, 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 system that can actually help these children be better and do better. Um, and then finally, our special education, our special needs population is, 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 I, I would love to be able to um, make sure that we are addressing those gaps and that our special needs students have uh, are, are included and they feel belonging in our school system. And they feel like they have what they need to be successful and, um, and from reading programs from the academic piece on our uh special needs to the uh severely disabled population. I would love for us to be able to serve them uh more equitably.
Oh my God, you said so much and all these things are going through my head with all these questions. So I'm, I'm gonna start with the special, cause that's what you, where you ended with the special education. Um, my brother was, my brother's a certified special education teacher. He was, that's what he did in New Jersey. He's here now. He just got here in November. So he teaches at Berkmar. But one of the things he said to me when he was teaching the, the elementary, at the elementary school. He said to me, he had a student, and this guy, and this has been ye- I'm talking about twenty years. This has always stuck out in my head, so I wanna ask you this question. So he said he had a student. And he said, this kid was bad, but he wasn't bad when he had him fixing computers. And I said to him, okay, so is there a way or do, is this something we do in Gwinnett County? Is there a way to find out what the kids are interested in before we put them in these classrooms? And is there a curriculum around that? Cause I feel like that kid was a kid who was bored. He wasn't special needs, he was just bored. Because if he could sit down and figure out how to make a computer work, which is very intricate and technical, he was not special needs. He was bored. That's my opinion. And that's me coming from a not, not educational professional background, just like looking at like, okay. And so I said to my daughter, my granddaughter is the same way. She's extremely, she's two years old and she's super smart. And when people hear her talk, they say, well, how old is she? We're like, she's two. So I said to my daughter, so listen, this kid's gonna be, this kid's really smart. And you're gonna have to keep her busy though. She's gonna get into, get in trouble if you don't. So how can we figure out early on how these kids learn and where they need to be? And do we have a place to put them? Like, because if he's a talented and gifted kid going into a regular classroom, that could be an issue because he's bored. And it's not keeping his attention. Do we have those type of things in place? So that's my first question. Hold that one for me. My second question is, um, the board recently approved fifty million dollars to go towards the board towards the board of education. The com- the commissioner's recently approved that. Is any of that money going towards the initiatives that you wanna see handled? Good. Now let's talk about those two things.
Yes, okay. So first with special needs, um. It's not my understanding that there is a comprehensive, um, um, a- assessment before identifying the student, um, for special needs. Now, of course, we do have, um, where, there is a process where you do, 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 uh, teachers do assessments and they recommend students um, to be evaluated. Um, in the evaluation, they either go to a doctor or they see a specialist. And that specialist then determines kind of where they are in term, in terms of, you know, ADHD or any other uh, diagnosis. It's like medically diagnosed by someone that's not a teacher, but someone who is a professional person with this experience. I am not a doctor in that field. But what I believe is that, you know, w- w- there may be an over-diagnosis of things. ADHD, for example, lack of focus in the classroom and that they're all over the place and they have behavior issues. And we just can't get them to do what they need to do. Um, but that might not be necessarily because there is an ADHD issue. Now, certainly ADHD is very real, but, uh, and, but, 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 but sometimes it, it may be exactly what you expressed. It may be that student may not feel like they belong in the classroom. And this is why we have to move from diversity, equity, inclusion to belonging, to really making sure that when I am a student sitting in that classroom, I know that this environment is healthy for me. I know that the space I am in says that I accept you, I embrace you and you belong. And so, and so this is, this is, this is, um, when we feel that, then some of the discipline is weighing. When we think about, um, our interests. So, um, if my learning style is very different than the majority of the classroom, then, um, it may be hard for me to understand or, or to really embrace what you're teaching because that's just not how I learn. I learn differently. And so, and so I think when we look at the interests of our students and when we look at how uh, the different learning styles, and this is all differentiation. It's, it's, it's really creates a different experience for our students. The challenge for teachers, and, and myself included, I'm a teacher, but my challenge is, the challenge is when you have a large class size, how can you effectively differentiate? Kids have different needs in the classroom. They have different learning styles. Um, they have different interests. And so you're managing a class of twenty to thirty-five, forty kids maybe for some people. Um, and it's really, really hard to do that. So I think if we can get down to the root, again, root cause, is the root cause of, of, of the, in my opinion, over-diagnosis of ADHD or, or the, or, or the, the root cause of the discipline issues. If we had smaller class sizes, we would be able to effectively differentiate. We would be able to manage discipline in a different way. We would, um, uh, restorative practices may already be kind of embedded in the system of our classroom because we can really have the time to effectively manage that. And so, and so I think the root cause of a lot of this from special needs in terms of the IEPs and, and children with ADHD um, is the small class sizes. Now, we do know that kids with severe disabilities, they certainly have smaller class sizes. There are parent professionals in the classroom assisting, um, um, but I, I, I also believe that we can do better even with the severely disabled population and figuring out how do we, what reading programs can we uh, provide to them. The kids who are dyslexia, looking at The kids who are dyslexia, looking at reading science. And often, um, if we can focus on reading science, if we can focus on, um, uh. You know, how, what resources we have to bring in to meet the needs of our pop- our students uh who are disabled. Uh, then are in special needs programming, um, it 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 will definitely impact student success.
You know, I was sitting here thinking, as you, yeah, as you were talking, I was sitting here thinking, um. I was on a call, I was on a match to mine call and and there was a gentleman, he was saying he hired people based on your DISC assessments. And I was like, I had never heard that before. I've taken Myers-Briggs and all those, but I had never heard anybody. Making a potential employee go through the DISC to see, are you a good fit for my company? And I'm thinking, wow, that's, to me, that was genius because now you don't hire somebody just because they need a check. You hire them because they 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 really fit what you're trying to to, what the need you have and also the talent that they bring to the table. But I was sitting here thinking as you were talking, you know, I wonder would it be possible to have like assessments set up where parents can pre-assess their kids? And and this is like, I think this is long term, because I think what you're saying is a national blueprint for success for our students. Like what you said in the in the in the in the first part of that, to me, that's a national blueprint for success around the country for our students. And I feel like that's gonna take a lot of work and a lot of time and this may be something to add to that and I don't mean to add to that, but I'm just thinking. If there is a way for parents to to ha- be able to pre-assess their kids and bring that printed out document. When it's time for them to register the kids, so this is what, this is where they are, this is what, this is what the computer says. And could and I think about that because I I feel like for me, if somebody had told me I could be an entrepreneur like thirty years ago. I would have been one thirty years ago. Like I wasted so much time just trying to do things based on what someone said to me. Well, you're good in math, then go be an accountant. Well, I was good in science too. Nobody told me to be an engineer or scientist. He told me to be an accountant and I get to college and I flunk out because I hate accounting, right? Nobody said that to me. They told me, well, you're good in math, you got great grades in math, go be an accountant. I'm like, okay, I'm gonna be an accountant and I get in, I hate it. So I feel like if there is, if there was a place for parents to get involved in 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 the pre. Um, preschool part of this, like before kids go to the first grade. Let's figure out what they like. And I don't even know if this exists. I'm just thinking outside of my, what you're saying. Let's let them take a little assessment to see where they are, what they like. Are they artists? Are they not artists? Should I put them in engineering now? Should they be tinkering with like AI because they're super smart like right now? You know, like I feel like that should be like a part of the educational system because I feel like. Not only would it help the teachers, it'll help the parents because now they won't get called so often because the kids are acting out. But it's certainly gonna help the kids because now they're focused on the things that they love innately. This is who I am. I wanna do this thing. So I don't know where that, how that's gonna happen, um, but I just feel like that should be a part of their game plan as well.
I I love that suggestion. In fact, I know that we do have some teachers. Um, um, and in in who in the classroom, they really focus on like, how do I? Uh, they give a quick assessment and activities in the first few days of school. And they figure out, I certainly do it as a teacher, like, who who's in my classroom? Like, what are you like? Who are you? I want to get to know you. And so we do have teachers that really spend a lot of time in doing that. Not just as an activity, but to really figure out how can I meet the needs of this student in my classroom. Uh, and again, that's hard to do when you ultimately consistently, right? Um, throughout the school year when you have a larger class size, but you know, we do have some teachers who figure out creative eh ways on how to do that. Um, but I agree with you, having an assessment um for our students and and every year. Would definitely be beneficial because, you know, children change, just like adults, right? We we we, you know, we're we're not these linear beings, you know? Um, and so when we understand that our interests may change, then maybe. You know, a kid who started elementary school may be, you know, a different type of learner, right? He may be more uh of an auditory learner. And then, you know, we get to uh high school and now this person has evolved to be a tactile learner. And what does that mean? And so like, we have to understand that people also evolve throughout, but doing an assessment can help capture the. The changes and the evolution of of individual students. So I love that idea. Um, that's certainly, um, ideas like that and other ideas that people have in the community, I encourage them to email the school board at my school board. G C P S K twelve dot org, email us these wonderful ideas you have. Um, and provide us with feedback on current policies and procedures and let us know what's happening in the classroom or what's happening. You know, um, in the community so that we can help ensure student achievement. And so, um, so emailing those ideas to my school board is great. That's something that. Um, I know, again, the assessment piece, some students, some teachers do it in the classroom. But having it system wide, um, I I I actually love that idea. Uh, but I do wanna go to your question you asked about the the funding we received, um, the federal funding and so. The funding we're using it, we're using the funding for uh our s- social emotional learning. Um, enhancing that, we are hiring more uh social workers. We're using the funding to uh purchase equipment eh for eh P P E. To ensure that our schools are safe and uh, you know, children in Jupiter County Public Schools are required to wear a mask. I'm very happy about that. Um, and I and I do believe even with that, we can't make everyone happy. But if if, it's either that or we close our schools, right? So we close our schools so that we don't have an outbreak. Or we leave our schools open, we do everything we can, a layered approach to prevent. Our school clo- closures and that's just wearing a mask. So it's like, what do you, we can't have schools open one hundred percent and everyone's just going without a mask. Like we're not living in a pandemic, like the Delta variant doesn't exist, right? So some of the funding is going towards, you know, all this equipment, cleaning supplies, maybe and things like that to help ensure. That we have a safe environment for our students so that they can be in school. Um, and so uh we we eh we have funding that's going towards our equity programming and. Ensuring that our kids have what they need, um, computers, making sure that we have one to resource. So it's not necessarily one to one, but it's one to resource need. So if there is a student who needs a computer, then we have to make sure they get a computer. All students don't need computers because their parents buy computers or they don't prefer the one, the Chromebooks we give them, they like other. Computers, Apples or, you know, Dells or whatever they use. So that's, that's their choice and 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 a lot of parents decide they wanna have. Their children to have their own personal computers. So they don't get a computer. So we don't necessarily have one to one because we don't need one to one, but we wanna make sure that every child. Every child who needs a computer will get a computer.
That is so nice. That is really, that's so ni- you know, and I and I I don't understand why. You know, a lot of people, Therese still, Dr. Therese still thinks that the coronavirus is a fluke, like they think it's not true. And I'm here to tell y'all that, um, my granddaughter went to daycare and got exposed and my mom passed away because of that. So it's very true. She she went to daycare, she got exposed. Yep, she got exposed and she came home and she had exposed all of us, my entire family, which was about twelve to fifteen people. And my mom was the one that passed away. Only one person did not get the coronavirus. He's my uncle. He lives in the house with me. And he didn't get it, but everybody else that was here with us got it and we, um, they told her, they told my daughter that she had. That somebody in the school had it, but they weren't in her classroom on December eighteenth. By Christmas, we were all sick. Like the day after Christmas, everybody was in the bed, just sick. Because she's, they said, no, oh no, she wa- they wasn't in her class. So my daughter Randy got her out of school, not thinking that what they said, she would, the person wasn't in her class. And she exposed all of us and we had did so well. I went, I had to speak at a conference in March. It was thousands of people. Thousands, I'm talking about, I'm with thousand, never got an exposure, mask, gloves, hand sanitizer. The baby go to daycare, everybody loves the baby, kiss the baby, baby kiss me and my mom every morning before she go to daycare. Exposes everybody, everybody. So for people who keep saying, it's not true, it's not, it's not, and I've heard pe- people that know me personally, they have said to my face, I don't believe it. And I'm like, you have, so and I'm gonna just punch him, that's the bad girl side of me.
Your mother passed away?
Yep, my mother pa- my mother passed away, my uncle passed away, the best man in my hu- in my wedding passed away. And one of my good friends passed away, he was a filmmaker, all from COVID. And people still say, I don't believe it.
I am so sorry that you have, we personally endured.
Yeah, but people don't believe it. They still think it's not true. And I'm like, oh my god, how could you not believe? When I look at my mother death certificate and says COVID nineteen on there, oh, it's very true.
I I agree and I I have, I've also been personally impacted. I haven't had COVID, um, but. You know, family members and friends have had COVID and I know it's real. And so there is data that says children aren't getting COVID in the same rate as adults. And children aren't spreading COVID like adults and we have one percent of children dying from COVID. But the data also shows that fourteen to nineteen percent of the people who have COVID are actually children. Even though they don't get sick like adults, even though they're like dying at the same rate, they are still contracting COVID. And because they are contracting COVID, they can also spread it to a teacher. And that teacher may have family members at home who may be at risk, or that teacher may be at risk. And this is why sometimes it's not just about the kids and saying. Oh, well, only one percent of them die. Well, only one percent is a hundred percent of the impact of someone else's life.
That's right.
A hundred percent of a life that that child is not here. So it's not only one percent, every life matters. So we do what we can to save just one life. And if it's wearing a mask and being inconvenienced by that, cause I hate masks too by the way, but. Wearing it and being inconvenienced by it, to be able to save a life of someone I don't know or someone I know. Let me do that. Wearing a mask to ensure that our children can get the social emotional experiences they need. In the in-class environment at the school, in-person learning. And if all they have to do is wear a mask, then I'm willing to do that. And so I I just, I I really find it, um, you know, surprising that we have people who 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 don't. Um, see the greater responsibility in eh and the humanitarian effort in just wearing a mask. Whether they decide to get vaccinated or not, that's their choice. I I personally made a decision to get vaccinated because I believe that that's my duty. To my family, that's my duty to the community and I wanna ensure herd immunity. That's a responsibility that any decision I made. But for people who don't believe in vaccines, well, you ju- wear the mask then. Don't be a spr- you know, do what you can to wear a mask. Um, but I do highly encourage people to get vaccinated.
Yeah, I I do too, you know.
No, maybe one percent of the people in hospitals who are dying are unvaccinated people. And that says a lot. And so the data is showing that. So I'm a believer in data and science. And 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 I want our kids to be, you know, uh, to be safe and I I want our teachers to be safe. And our, and I want our staff to be safe. And when kids are in the classroom, you know, even though. They're not dying from COVID at the same rate, they still should be able to, uh, you know, wear a mask to ensure that if they have it. And if they're asymptomatic, which we've also, there's data, we have a lot of children who are asymptomatic and they're walking around fine, but they're carrying COVID. And so if we, and 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 if we have those kids just wearing a mask to even prevent one life. We had a teacher in our school system, her name was Maude, uh, she she passed away, um, and she's a paraprofessional. She passed with, from COVID and like, I hold her name to the sky and I eh give her family and and her her friends. Uh, my condolences, but you know, again, uh, she passed away from COVID and and we eh it just. If if we could do whatever we can just to protect her life, then we should do that.
She was the one that was about to retire? Yep, I read, I talked about this story, cause you know, it had just happened, like it happened around the same time my mom and so. And I was one of those people at the beginning and said, I'm not getting vaccinated. You know, my mom said, I'm getting vaccinated soon as they release. I'm like, I'm not getting vaccinated. And let me tell you, it's nothing, if you haven't had the 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 virus before, you don't know, but if you've had it. It's it's one of the worst feelings in the world to be walking around feeling like you're contaminated and that you could harm somebody, if you have a conscience. Some people don't care. Me personally, I didn't wanna go, I had it, I was sick as a dog and I I ever, I never get sick. I was sick as a dog, couldn't breathe and I never get sick. But the feeling of me being able to hurt somebody, just because I walk in a room, it was the most, it was mentally. It mentally messed me up, Dr. Therese. Like I was so messed up mentally, I didn't wanna leave my house, even when I got. When I, even when they told me, you know, I was good. It still weighs on my mind like right now, like if someone's, like I supposed to speak at a conference in October, I just, I just told me, I said, I can't come. And I'm vaccinated. I was like, yeah, I I can't come. I I I can't get on another plane right now. I don't know, the variant is out, I just can't, I can't, mentally I can't come. And people that know me, they're like, oh my god, what's happened to you? It changes you. It cha- it changes you. You know, it it affected me in such a way, me personally, by just having it. I feel like it's still in my body and it's crazy because. Uh, if you go and uh Google this, a lot of us smell cigarette smoke and there's no cigarettes. There are no, there's nobody smoking around us and we just smell like cigarette smoke. So I said to my brother, I said, you do know it did something to our brains, right? He said, why you say that? I said, how can we smell, how could our brain tell our nose that there's cigarette smoking, there's nobody smoking around us? We don't smoke and nobody around us is smoking. I'm waking up in the middle of the night going, who's smoking? Nobody smoking. So it it does something to you and you have this, eh it's it's crazy. I can't even. Put your mask on, get vaccinated because I'm telling you, like I'm telling you, not only would it affect you physically. It will mess you up if you're not strong. There was a guy, they said he had ringing in his ear. And what, and um um, he couldn't stop the ringing, he was gonna commit suicide. It's a side effect. My brother has the ringing and the smoke. And so when he read that, he's like, I gotta get rid of the ringing, you know, and he was able to do something to get rid of the ringing. But we can't get rid of the smoke. It just comes out of nowhere. It's like, who's smoking? Nobody's smoking. Not a person near us. I've been laying in my bed at eleven o'clock at night and someone, do you smell that smoke? He's like, I don't smell no smoke. And it smells, eh but it's a side effect, so it totally messes you up, you know, so I'm vaccinated. But I'm still very cautious about these different variants. Um, I still try to be, you know, I wanna get back to my normal. I don't think I'll ever get back to that. So if you have not been vaccinated and you don't wanna wear the mask, you are risking a lot, trust me. You're risking your mental sanity, you're risking your family, your friends, the people you you re- you're risking a lot. I was never anxious and I was never, um, paranoid. I'm all of those things now and I have to deal with that. I'm paranoid about everything. My daughter doesn't call, I'm like, hey, hey, you didn't call me. So it's crazy, like it messes you up, you know, and so. I don't know, I just, I pray that they understand that what you, what you guys are suggesting for the kids is just to keep them safe. And to keep everybody around them safe. And mentally, cause you don't want your kids to have ringing in their ear and they don't know why it won't stop. Or they smelling cra- now, if you Google it, people smell all kinds of stuff that's not there. I'm like, lord, thank god I don't smell some of the stuff they smell. Dead dog, all kind of craziness. But your brain is telling, Google it. Your brain is telling you that this is happening. And 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 it's not, it's not even there. So it changes your life in so many ways, so. You know, I just hope that they they understand. If you don't wanna get vaccinated, put the mask on. Just just put the mask on. I hate them too. It makes my, I hate them, I can't even them, but I got a whole carload, I got in my wallet, in my purse. Hand sanitizer everywhere, everywhere I go, I ha- I got hand sanitizer on my keys because everywhere I go, I need to make sure, I need to. You know, and I was never that person, but I'm that person now, so, yeah, it's crazy. So I didn't get a chance to talk to you about the entrepreneur side, cause we're, and we could go on about this this educational side of what you do forever. But, um, and I know you're entrepreneur and I just gotta, uh, and I wanna respect your time, but I just gotta ask you, how do you balance it all? So I see you are the founder of, this was a good one for me. I was like, okay, what does that mean? You say I'm the co-founder of the Jewish Global Diversity. I was like, okay, is that a part of your heritage?
Yeah, so so I am Jewish and so. We actually, uh, the our, uh, the name of the organization now is Multicultural Jewish Alliance. And and basically it is a a social group. We just get together, we celebrate our Jewish holiday birthdays. Um, our our different cultures and it's just a beautiful way to, uh, you know. Be Jewish and do Jewish in a multicultural space where we all feel like we belong. And, um, and so that's really what what Multicultural Jewish Alliance is. Um, also involved in an organization called the, um, Black Jewish Liberation Collective. And that basically is uh an organization that, you know, focuses on the experiences of black Jews and how uniquely positioned we are in. As Jews in, um, sometimes very Ashkenazi environments. And, um, and making sure we feel belong there and represented and also just in the greater community. As as black people who, of course, you see us, we're we're black people, but we also live as Jews. And so we kind of have a community of of support and conversation around being represented. And also being leaders in the movement of justice and liberation. And, um, having a mindset that isn't abolitionist mindset in America. That focuses on making sure that we build a foundation that is, or we create a foundation, right? That is eh eh based on the liberation of all people. And and so that's kind of what what we focus on. So I'm very proud to be Jewish and to be a black woman and and to be a leader in this community. I'm engaged in my synagogue and I teach, you know, uh, Jewish, uh, studies. Uh, well, just for for sixth graders and I really. And I really, I love it, I love, I love teaching, I love my Jewish community, um, I'm very proud, very, very proud to be Jewish. And oftentimes people say, well, you know, how is it to be, you know, black and Jewish, and I'm saying, well, you know, you experience racism and you also experience antisemitism. And it's real, and people say, oh, no, you just experienced racism, yes, but some of this hate I get is also because I'm both. And it's also misogyny and the misogynoir, and so we have all these things that we experience as black women, um. And that, you know, unfortunately, uh, you know, we we have to do what we can and take care of ourselves. Because we are the most disrespected, unprotected, and you know, people don't listen to us and all of these things, um, but but. But we have to stand together as a community and and again, know who we are and do what we can to protect ourselves, take care of ourselves. And like I said, for me, it's art, art and uh is 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 part of that, and so I've I've written, you know, several books. And the books I've written is is uh, and I perform my poetry as well, um, that's all part of just. Creating that balance for me and that self-expression to be free, and that's my liberation, my liberation lies in. In in art, my liberation lies in 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 the, my love for self-expression and and and, uh. You know, but even then, people are trying to use my art against me, and trying to use my art to destroy me, and trying to use my art. But I I refuse to allow uh that piece, uh my art, which is really all I have to. Help me, you know, in a lot of ways and and nature, um, to be taken away. Because people have some offense about it or don't like my expression, well, it's art, if you don't like my art, go somewhere else.
Right, that's right, man, so we gotta, I gotta have you back, cuz we didn't get a chance to talk about that, the Jewish side. We didn't get a chance to talk about the entrepreneur side, and I know you gotta go, plus I gotta go too, um.
Okay.
But I gotta tell you, it's so funny because you're the second black Jew I ever met. I, uh, and well, you're the only black Jew I ever met, I saw one guy, I used to live in West Orange, New Jersey, and there's a whole Jewish community. Up there, and I used to work with Jewish Agency, Jewish Family Services, which I loved them, I learned a lot, where I was the only black in the office. And um we had two Italians and a black woman and everybody else was Jewish, so that was a real nice cultural diversity right there. And it was really nice, it was a wonderful experience because I got to learn a lot about the culture and how they do things, what was crazy is. I learned about all the things that we don't do in the black community, I'm like, woo, we don't do that. You know, so it was a lot of learning, and I wanna bring you back at some point to talk about both of those things. I remember seeing this guy, I was in West Orange driving, I I was going to a football game, and it was a Saturday. And the guy was walking down and I saw him, he had like, he was like, I think he was orthodox though, cuz he had like the the, I was like. Is that a black Jew? So I did a U-turn cuz I I had never seen one, and I know that sounds crazy, y'all, but I I had never seen one. And I was like, oh my god, a black Jew, you know, cuz you hear that term, but you hear it because they say we cheap, like, cuz my husband called me like, he's just a black Jew. Cuz he says I'm cheap, I was like, no, I'm just conservative when it comes to like not wasting money, and so he would call me that, but. I wanna bring you back to talk about the entrepreneur side and living in a community, you know, where we don't normally see people. You know, we don't, I bet people like, what, is she Jewish? Like, no, I. I just thought it, I thought you were like a member, a co-founding member, I didn't know you were Jewish, so that's why I brought it up, but I would love to have you come back again, but before then. How can people, how do you want people to reach out to you? Cuz you have a lot of wealth of information on a lot of different things. How do you want people to reach out to you if they wanna reach out to you?
Sure, well, it depends on what you're reaching out to me for, right? Uh, if it's regarding the school board, then you can reach out to me on the uh elect. You know, re-elect Dr. Therese Johnson School Board on Facebook, uh, you can uh reach me out and inbox me there. You can also send an email to me at BOE District Five, B O E D five at gmail dot com. Um, you can also reach me um at uh G C P S K twelve. Dot org, so it's myschoolboard at G C P S K twelve dot org. That email address goes to all of the school board members, so if, so I would encourage people, if it's something that they want. To provide feedback on, or if they want to say, yeah, provide a suggestion, to email all the school board members at that address, that one address. Reaches all of us, but specifically for me, you can go to my Facebook page, or you can, um, you know, email me at the uh B O E D five at gmail dot com. Um, and then for my art, uh, it is, you can reach me uh via my Facebook at, you know, Dr. Therese Johnson. Um, or if it is around diversity, equity, inclusion, the global purpose approach. I have a Facebook page called The Global Purpose Approach, you can reach me there, there are inboxes, there are messages, you click on there, boom, send a message and you, that's how you can reach me, so.
She, listen, y'all, and and those are just what, tho- that's how you can reach her now, when I bring her back, she's, listen, she has a a beauty company. She has a school that she started, she co-founded the the Organization for Jewish Pe- listen, I know, there's a lot, I couldn't get it all in. I'm gonna bring her back if she will would be so um grateful to grace us one more time with her presence.
Okay, great, now I wanna let you know, as a as a school board member, I'm, I don't have the school um anymore because of conflict. I can't anymore, but we can talk about that offline.
Yeah, okay, we'll talk, we'll talk about how you started and why you started though, cuz I think that's. I think that'd be interesting for a lot of people, cuz I I've even thought about starting a school, um, entrepreneurial school, you know, so it's gotta be one of them kind.
I can show you how to do it.
Yay, see there, look at God, look at God, y'all, look at God.
A lot of work and money.
I know, I believe so, I believe so, thank you so much for being my guest, this has been really amazing. Thank you so much for sharing all the great information about our school system and how we can help our kids and anything I can do to. To help you get the word out about things you're doing and 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 help you, you know, cuz this show is streamed on Facebook and. It's also streamed on Roku, so anybody with a Roku television could watch us live right now, um, I'm on Apple TV, I'm all over the place, so this show is everywhere. Anywhere people ingest content, that's where we are, everywhere, um, but anything I can do to help you move the mission forward. Any mission that you're working on, please don't hesitate to reach out, um, Georgia has my email, but if you just, if if you need it, it's Audrey at noise media dot U S. Just like hers, but Audrey, and I'll be, you know, just put in the content who you are and I and I get, cuz I get hundreds, just. Put Dr. Therese in there, and I was like, okay, let me hit her back real quick, um, but I I I love you and I applaud you for all the great work that you're doing, all the great initiatives. I feel like those should be, that should be a national blueprint, you know, I feel like our education system needs to overhaul. The way we learn, the things we learn about, I think it needs to be completely over, nobody cares about Civil War history anymore, it what, it doesn't make a difference. What do we need right now? That's my opinion, ah, that's my opinion, I'm sticking to it, y'all, um. So I think we need a education overhaul, and I think you're gonna be a a a big catalyst for that, so, you know. Let me know what you need me to help you with, so.
Thank you, absolutely, thank you so much.
You're welcome, so listen, guys, that's all I got for you today, I gotta go, cuz I'm late, thank you, Dr. Therese again for being here with me. I'm going to my last song and I'm gonna come back and give you my word of inspiration for today, so stay tuned, I'll be right back in about. Four minutes. Welcome back, welcome back, so listen, guys, that's all I got for you today, but before I go, I'm gonna give you some, um. Because we were talking about education, I know these are gonna be corny for some of you, but I got like three of them, and I just felt like they were like. Timely for the for the for the segment that we just had with Dr. Therese Johnson. Again, I wanna thank Dr. Therese Johnson for being my guest today, um, she seems like she's doing an amazing job at on the board, um. On our educational board here in Gwinnett County, you can see some of the initiatives that she had, they're just amazing, I think it should be the blueprint for national. Um, a national blueprint, educational blueprint for for our kids across the country. I feel like our our education system is antiquated, and I feel like it's time for us to update it and 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 maximize. All the resources that we have available to help our kids strive and survive and be strong and and gain players in our new society. That's that's just my opinion, and I think that she's on the right track, and I think she's doing amazing things here in Gwinnett County, and I feel like, you know, the the work she's do- she's gonna do here in Gwinnett County. Um, it'll be recognized nationally across the states, probably across the world, but anyway, I felt like my my closing remarks today, I got three of them, and I know they're corny. I know, but I'm gonna say them anyway, so the first thing is, a mind is a terrible thing to waste, that's the first thing. The second one is, readers are leaders, read a book, and the next thing is, earners are learners, learners are earners, right? All of it based around education and learning, there are so many resources out there for you right now, I'm talking about tremendous amount of resources, to the point where it can be overwhelming. I know that, because I'm always searching the resources, but here's the thing. We can, we can train ourselves, we can train our kids, if you know that you have a child and you don't understand how they learn. I know that you can go online and find a program to help to help the teachers, the teacher's going to run, and we've heard this millions and millions of times. Teachers are the most underpaid, un- undervalued employees in the world, we hear that all the time, why, why do they say that? Because you made me say, why do they say that? They make a lot of money, they don't make a lot of money for all the work they do, you gotta talk about hundreds of kids a day. Five days a week, somebody else's kids, that once they leave you, you have no control over what they do and how they do it, that's a lot. A hundred little different personalities every single day, five days a week, that's a lot, so that's why people say that they are under-valued, underpaid. Help them out, parents, if you can give your kids the edge by getting them assessed on how they learn, right? What they care about, what they like, and give that report to a teacher, when they go into school, that's gonna help them understand, okay, this is how I need to work with little Johnny. This is how I need to work with little little Victoria, little 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 Carter, that's my granddaughter's name, Carter. This is how I need to work with them so they can be successful throughout the school year, learners are earners, readers are leaders, and a mind is a terrible thing to waste. So that got for you today, you could be anywhere in the world, but to spend the last hour and twenty-six minutes with me, and I love and appreciate you to life for that, listen, it's my Friday, y'all know what it is. It's my Friday, I'm out, I'll be back on Monday, God willing, to bring you more of the Good Morning Gwinnett Show. Make sure to follow me on Facebook at Good Morning Gwinnett, follow me on Twitter at GM Gwinnett, and follow me on Instagram at Good Morning Gwinnett as well. And if you listen to the show on Apple Podcasts, find your favorite two episodes, give it five stars, share the episode, listen, if you love this episode, like I love to share with all of your friends. Especially the teachers and the educational partners, share this episode because Dr. Ther- Dr. Therese has some great things to say. Share this episode with your friends, make sure she get a lot of listens, and make sure that you support our school system and our community, I love you guys, stay safe, keep your mask on. Listen, I ain't trying to tell you what to do, but I just told y'all, I smell smoke when there is no smoke. I'm just trying to tell you, so vaccinate yourself if you don't wanna smell smoke when there is none, I'm just trying to help somebody, I feel like a pastor right now. Alright, so listen, thank you again for listening, I love you guys, stay safe out there, I'll be back again Monday at ten AM, God willing, until next time, make it a great day, bye, y'all.